Good evening. I would like to call the Order Board of Public Works. We have two items on the agenda. Item number one, permission to bid contract 2309 Tree Surety 2024. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, everyone. All right, thank you. This evening, our department is requesting permission to bid the annual tree planting contract. The number for this contract is 23-09. The contract will consist of planting approximately 260 trees. This contract will support the Free Street Tree Program Emerald Ashport Replacement Trees, Tree Surety for street tree establishment and new residential development, replacement of trees following street reconstruction on Laurel Drive South and Pennsylvania, trees in Regner Park, and also trees along the new Riverwalk Phases Two and Three. The pre-bid estimate for this contract is $98,000. That includes a 5% contingency, hand digging around utilities, and an additional 12 weeks of additional irrigation if we have a really dry summer. The base contract includes 12 weeks, and then we also get an alternate for an additional 12 weeks. We don't want to invest all the money in the trees and have them dry up and die later in the season. We have several funding sources for the trees. Our tree surety account will cover the cost for the new trees and new residential development. And the remainder of the tree planting will be paid using capital funds from 2023 and 2024, carry forward forestry operating funds, donations, and revenues from previous wood sales. In an effort to get good bids, we like to bid that this contract out this time of the year for a spring planting of 2024. We bid it now, we get our bids back now, contractors can get us on their schedule, contractors can find the trees, get things organized, and we always get a better bid doing it now than, let's say, April or May of next year when they are already busy. So, thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions for Mike? There are none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Item number two, approval of stormwater management practice maintenance agreement, 2805 East Progress Drive. Good evening, Max.
Good evening, thank you. This item is another approval for stormwater management practice maintenance agreement. This is the traditional item that we have every time we approve a stormwater management permit for new development on a property. It is an agreement that is made between the city and the property owner to ensure that the property owner will install the stormwater management practices according to plan and will maintain them so they continue to function properly in the future. This property is located in the South Industrial Park, and this is a park that was developed with regional ponds, providing the properties with develops following certain parameters. This proposed development exceeds the parameters in the fact that it will increase the impervious area on the property, which is the reason why they have to provide additional stormwater management practice to handle the additional stormwater, and this is why they need this permit, and we need to have this agreement. So, this is not unusual from our traditional procedures, and we recommend approval of the agreement.
Okay, do we have a motion on the floor?
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, any questions for Max? There are no questions for Max, being no further bid, or all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, Max.
Thank you.
Being no further business before the Board of Public Works, adjourned this year.
The Finance Committee is called to order. We have five items on the agenda. Item number one is a resolution accepting donations to the park's recreation and forestry department. Mike?
All right, thank you. This evening, we have five very impressive donations to present to the community. The first donation of $5,000 is donated by the Early Risers Kiwanis for the Library Recreation Center. This is the fourth installment of a $50,000 gift. The second donation of $180 is donated by the West Bend Disc Golf Club for Riverside Disc Golf Course. The third donation of $15,893.24 is donated by the Friends of Lackliran. The Friends Group paid for the equipment for two new solar lights in the parking lot out there, and our staff did the installation of the bases, the poles, and the lights. Again, another great partnership. The next donation of $120 was donated by various citizens for the Alabilly Playground, Fence Picket Fundraiser, and General Donation. And the last and very impressive donation of $5,495 was donated by the Washington County Dive Association for an Aqua Eye, which is an underwater search device that we can use in the Regner Park Swim Pond. It's a really excellent tool. I hope we get to use it often for training, and that is it. But this is, will be an excellent tool for us to add to that operation down there. Thank you to them. So, thank you to all the donors who support our projects, our programs, and the safety of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds, Park Trust, Park Fund. Mike?
Thank you. In July of this year, the Common Council gave us authorization to transfer and utilize $8,600 to purchase several lifeguard stands for Regner Park. Upon receiving those stands, there was some cosmetic damage to them. We contacted our supplier, and we got a $600 credit back for the purchase of those stands. So, this evening, we are asking that that $600 be transferred back into the PARC account for a future priority project. Thank you.
Motion approved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Item number three is a resolution accepting a donation from the Walmart Local Community Grant Program. Chiefs?
Good evening. Walmart Local Community Grant Program, once again, wanted to make sure that the first responders played a role, were acknowledged for their role within the community in July. There goes our team right now. In July of this year, we were advised that we had received a $2,700 grant, $1,000 earmarked for the fire department, and $850 for the police department, and an additional $850 for the shop with a cop program, which is administered through our Fraternal Order of Police Lodge, which our department is very heavily involved with. Captain Rollinger, who's in the back now, leads that example. So, we're asking that we accept the funds. From the police department standpoint, asking that you accept all 1,700 for us. We'll put in towards crime prevention funds, 850, and then cut a check for 850 to the Fraternal Order of Police to use specifically towards the shop with a cop program.
Our transfer is going to be for the account for fire prevention materials and to help fund the smoke detector program, which is available to all the citizens of West Bend.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion, then, who's the second? Any discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number four is a resolution accepting donations in memory of King Riffle. Alderman Berquist, you're recognized?
Thank you, sir. I'd like to just acknowledge the fact that besides all the work King did with the police department, he was also a member of this committee, this common council, and obviously the community of West Bend, and devoted his entire life to this city. So, I'd just like to recognize him for that, and respectfully like to make a motion to approve the resolution.
Thank you, at second. The chair will second it. Chief, go ahead.
Thank you very much, and I echo Alderman Berquist's comments. I believe it was a short time ago, I was in front of this body, also reminding us of King Riffle's service to our community as we accepted the donation of the flag that flies in our briefing room right now. King unfortunately passed away on August 25th, and it was our sincere honor to help the family, honor King's memory, and be a significant part. Steve, I'm sorry, King's son, Steve, is in the audience tonight representing himself and King's wife, Mary. They made it very clear that they wanted to do something to continue King's legacy and support within the community, and so earmarked donations in memory of King to the police department, and to specifically two programs that King was very involved in, our Explorer Program, which is now called the Cadet Program, and our Crime Prevention Patrol, which he was instrumental in starting. And as you see, we have members of the Crime Prevention Patrol here to honor King as well. So, I ask that you accept those donations in the amount of $1,300 total, $660 to the Cadet Program, $410 to the Crime Prevention Patrol, and $230 to the department, which will use for crime prevention donations. Just a point of process, the donations to the cadets and the crime prevention were submitted directly to them. They maintain their own accounts, their own audited account level. So, I'm really only asking council action to accept the $230 that came to the police department.
Thank you, and I'd like to add to Alderman Berquist that I had the pleasure and privilege of serving next to King. I had, did crime prevention at the sheriff's department at the same time he did crime prevention at the police department, at a time when crime prevention was not really overly appreciated or understood. And King had a major impact, not only in West Bend, but he was known statewide for his work with the Training, or rather, the Crime Prevention Officers Association.
Thank you.
We have a motion. Any other discussion otherwise? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. And finally, we have a resolution accepting donations from First Baptist Church.
This is a result of them asking for a informational meeting for fire prevention and fire safety. They were thankful for that, and as a result, they donated $40, and that's going to be put towards the fire prevention materials and the smoke detector program also.
Motion approved.
Motion should be accepted. I can do that.
That was from Spartsy.
Oh, John, did John make the motion?
Yes.
Oh, all right. I'll recognize Alderman Sparts for the motion, and I'll take the second.
You made the late motion.
Who made the second?
Second.
Everybody.
We'll give it to Alderman Sternig this time. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
As there's no further business, before the Finance Committee, we're adjourned.
Good evening. It is Monday, October 9th, 2023, and this is a meeting of the Common Council of the City of West Bend. More than 24 hours prior to this meeting, notice of the time placed, date, and subject matter of the meeting was posted in accordance to Wisconsin State statutes. I'd like to ask our clerk to confirm this meeting was properly posted.
I confirm.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice overall.
We recognize the quorum tonight. All of our aldermen are here at the meeting. We do have Alderman Sparts calling in virtually. Thank you for joining us, John, and we've got you on the mic and can see that you're participating. We appreciate that. We've got a Fire Prevention Week proclamation to read tonight, and I don't know if I need a motion to do this, but I'll take one anyway.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderman Berquist. I'm going to read this. 2023 Fire Prevention Week Proclamation. Whereas in 1922, President Calvin Coolidge proclaimed the week of October 8th as Fire Prevention Week in commemoration of the Great Chicago Fire and the Fishtago Fire, which began on October 8th, 1871. And whereas the city of West Bend first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. The 2023 Fire Prevention Week theme is Cooking Safely Starts With You. Effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. And whereas home fires caused 2,800 civilian deaths in the United States in 2021, according to the National Fire Prevention Association. And fire departments in the United States responded to 338,000 home fires in 2021. And whereas the city of West Bend residents will make sure they are responsible to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And therefore, I Joel Ongart, Mayor of the City of West Bend, do hereby proclaim October 8th through the 14th, 2023, as Fire Prevention Week throughout our community. I urge all of the people of the city of West Bend to practice fire safety and to participate in the public safety activities of the City of West Bend Fire and Rescue Services during Fire Prevention Week of 2023. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Chief, by still.
I'd like to thank you very much for that. So, we have Fire Prevention Week, but in West Bend here, we like to call it Fire Prevention Month, because throughout the month, we go to every elementary school in West Bend hitting hundreds of kids with fire prevention materials. I'd like to thank our members of our department for the extra work that they put in this month. Every day, we're going somewhere. So, above their regular workload, it's really appreciated and well worth it for the community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chuck. We'll move on in our agenda tonight. We have a special appointment I'd like to bring to the council tonight, and this is an appointment of the Tourism Committee Commission, and we have a business representative who moved out of town a couple of months ago, and so I would like to replace that person on the Tourism Commission with Kirk Emrick, who is a longtime resident of the city of West Bend. He's the CFO of Westbury Bank and an all-around awesome individual, for those of you who know him. So, I would like to put that in front of the council tonight for an appointment to the Tourism Commission.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderman Model. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much for that, and he will have his first meeting tomorrow night. We do have an item of business where a public hearing is appropriate, and so we're going to have a public hearing tonight regarding levying of a special assessment for the downtown West Bend Business Improvement District, known as the BID. And so, at this point, I'm going to ask if anybody would like to speak to the council tonight on this topic, and the public hearing is now open on this topic.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Seeing no interest.
Thank you, Alderman Allen, and second by Alderman Sternig to close public hearing. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Tonight, we have consent agenda items 2 through 8, which were just done in committee.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen, and, excuse me, Alderman Model and Alderman Allen. Any comments, questions on the consent agenda? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda items up for review and discussion tonight, we're going to start with the review of the 2024 budget. I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Shambo.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity to present the 2024 budget, the introduction to that. We've been talking about this for the last few months. I had the CIP approved at your last meeting, which helps us build this budget. We've had all of the department heads submit their budgets to finance, Carrie and myself review with the department head team their respective budgets. We do make modifications where there might some be needed. You will, you do have that page in your packet. It's a, it's entitled Page One, but it's a document that's proposed budget versus adopted. It says adopted summary, but obviously, it's not been adopted yet. This is your introductory meeting to the budget. You'll have some time to review the budget document after tonight. We do have another meeting in two weeks, and then the first meeting, and the only meeting in November, is the meeting that we look for budget adoption. So, if you have any questions, concerns, thoughts regarding the budget or the process of the budget, feel free to share those with me, with your department head team, several of which are in attendance tonight. The ones that aren't, are not, not interested, they're just not here, and would certainly make themselves available if you had any questions or thoughts afterwards. We do appreciate having those questions in advance, so if you do have a question or a concern regarding a budget item that you've found or noticed, or that you hear about tonight, don't hesitate to reach out before the next meeting. That way, we have an opportunity to review and have a formulated response for you. I am walking through, will be walking through, not the budget document, the general fund budget document that you received. There's more detail behind this document. We talk about this on an annual basis. I do have the opportunity to provide paper copies, if you'd rather have that. We did hear from one of you that you'd like to see it in paper, and that's fine. So, don't hesitate to ask for that. We'll make copies. You don't have to blow up your printer at home in order to make a copy of our proposed budget. It does change a bit, and not a ton, between now and when it's adopted. There are a few items, and maybe I'll just start by noting that, within the general document, there are a few highlighted items that we don't have the information yet. So, it's Page Six of the general fund revenue budget. We're still waiting on the state to provide us with the connecting streets and the road allotment amount. So, you can see that we just inserted the 1.187 million for road allotment, and then connecting streets is another 130,000. We just moved over the 2023 amounts to 2024 for now, so those are plug numbers that could change the overall budget as those numbers come in. It's really hard to predict what they're going to be. It's a formula-based number that comes to us based on how much we spend on roads over the last several years, and the state has anticipated, or has indicated that they've anticipated adding additional money to this amount, but we don't know if that means more money for us or not. Well, as soon as we know, we'll share that information back with you, but we, and for sure, we will know by the 23rd when we meet again. Last year, we received that information from the state on the 10th, so we, again, we anticipate it very soon, but we don't have that data as of yet. I think most of the other numbers are in. I did not share the budget memo with you in advance of tonight. You have it in front of you, just put it up on the screen. We'll make it available by way of email afterwards. I do plan to just walk through it, if that's okay, Mayor, as far as process is concerned, and then maybe we'll talk through some big picture items about what the revell means and overall tax rate and levy increase and all that kind of good stuff. But just walking through the document, the health insurance, we're really fortunate, we're self-funded here, and we've had another solid year, so we're not recommending an increase in the general fund health insurance. For the second straight year, we're having, we're able to project a modest decrease, so a small decrease of 35,000 in that area is really a big deal in our health insurance fund. That can swing wildly if we have significant good years or not-so-good years. So, I'm pleased to report we've had a couple of solid years and healthy employees over the last couple of years. We hope that trend continues for the future. Badger books or e-polling, and absentee ballot supplies, this one shouldn't be a surprise, but it's a bit cyclical when we have to spend more money on elections. There are a bunch of elections coming our way in 2024, including the presidential election and primary. That number, 150,000, prepares us well for the upcoming elections. Liz Bittin and her team will be prepared with all of the ebooks in place, and the ballot supplies are just that, the ballot supplies. You'll see in a minute, when we walk through the increase or decrease document, that there is a decrease in this area for the actual printing of ballots. Washington County has generously offered to print the ballots for us, so we're going to save about $10,000 there. We are spending, obviously, way more than that to be prepared for the election, but there is a small savings that we were able to deduct from the proposed budget in the actual printing of the ballots themselves. The next item, Chief shared with me, I apologize for this, I have an error in the document. Based on my notes from our meeting with the police department, I thought we were anticipating a $100,000 increase in our camera system. Chief clarified with me just before the meeting that it was, it's only a $30,000 increase. So, the budget that you have before you is accurate, my note is inaccurate, and that should reflect $30,000, not 100,000. It is a total of just over 100,000 in the Exxon Police area. I've asked Chief to pop up for a minute in, after I'm through this bulleted item, maybe he can touch on that too, if you have any questions specifically about the new camera system. Net new construction is down a bit compared to last year, 2023's number. 1.48 is still a relatively healthy increase. It does afford us, according to the levy limit formula, the ability to raise our levy about $300,000 is what that 1.48 reflects. So, down from last year's number of 194, but still a positive number regarding net new construction going on within the city. So, all the economic development efforts, all the new construction of housing and multifamily apartments go into this number. It's a number that, under the levy limit formula and the levy limit rules set by the state, is really important to all municipalities. So, positive news, not quite as good as the 1.94 of the year before. I do remember saying at this meeting a year ago that I don't anticipate it staying that high for the following year. I guess that held true, that it went down a bit. We'll see what we're blessed with in the coming year ahead. As far as instructions, timeline, process, it's all pretty similar to how we've operated in the past. We did choose with Mayor Ongart and the Finance Committee Chair, Alderman Dolnax, blessing to pause the Finance Committee review meeting. If you have thoughts about how that, this process is different than last year's, but in the last couple of years, we had a special meeting in October, and the way the calendar worked with this meeting being the second Monday in October instead of the first, it just made more sense to not have that meeting. In addition to, the process just seemed a bit clunky for department heads, and I know you trust your team, you have solid people in place. Proposing these budgets, if you have questions about any line item, don't hesitate to review them and ask those questions, but I'm really pleased with the process this year, and don't think we'll miss a beat by not having that extra Finance Committee meeting. Stress the delivery of the questions. Again, I'll say that at the conclusion of this, but department head team and Carrie and myself, it's just easier to react if we find out about thoughts that you might have in advance of the public meetings that we have with you. As far as the CIP, we're maybe a step ahead of the game. Last year at this time, we had not completed our CIP or adopted it yet at council. We were waiting on some SDP funding through the state and the county. That money is all in place, and we're able to work together in a collaborative fashion to get the CIP approved in advance, so thank you for that. I'm excited about having that behind us going into this budget review process. I mentioned the review of the department head budgets with Carrie and myself. That was completed on September 12th. And then what happens between September 12th and now is Carrie and her team compile all the budgets. We then meet from a finance and administrative team to review those budgets and see where any modifications might need to be made, what available levy limit formula, expenditure restraint, all of those things that go into the budget creation, and then turn this document into you for tonight's meeting. The addition, the only addition of a new position proposed in the 2024 budget is within the police department, and again, I shared that Chief is prepared to speak to the police support specialist. I think it best comes from him. It's a position that he feels strongly about adding to his team, and one that I support the addition of as well within the 2024 budget. There are, I don't want to give you the impression that there are no other needs within our departments. There are. This is a need that has bubbled to the top, if you will, and one where, again, Chief will explain the need and how it will benefit our organization as a whole. We did combine the economic development and administrative budgets. It reflects, reflected in 2024 for the first time. We've been operating this way for the last few years, and with the recreation of the Assistant City Administrator position, it just made sense to eliminate the economic development budget and put it all under administration. That function of duty economic development is handled within administration. This bullet is an important one, the fact that there is no fund balance needed to balance the budget. We have a significant fund balance in place, and we use it when needed and when appropriate, and we're not afraid to come to you with bold requests if something is needed, or if something hits the fan and we need to replace an item or a piece of equipment. Most recently, we came to you with the fire, with the garbage truck, my apologies, to replace a garbage truck and to get it into the lease program. We took those monies a few months ago, and you folks authorized that coming out of fund balance. So, the fund balance is there for special items like that, but thankfully, it's not not the case here in the city of West Bend. No fund balance is needed to balance the budget for 2024. The interest income is significant. We are increasing our interest income, $550,000 for 2024. That's a big number for us. It's a number that's reflective of the market, and it's a number that we anticipate holding based on projections that are available to us. It's a number that's assisting us, obviously, with the creation of this budget in a big way, that $550,000 increase in our interest income. State shared revenue, lots of hoopla about this earlier in the year. Excited about the fact that the state has modified the amount that they're providing for municipalities in 2024 and beyond. This is an index number, so it should go up as revenues go up within the state from a sales tax standpoint. This $782,000 is being incorporated into the budget to be spent on items like police and fire and other program areas that are seeing increases. In our police and fire area alone, for example, we are seeing an $800,000 increase. So you could say that we are spending the entire $782,000 on the police and fire increases for 2024. Those things are the position that I just mentioned, salaries that are going up, the $30,000 of the new camera system. Fire is seeing a new software as well that is seeing some increases. So I am very thankful for the state that they approved that additional money, but as some have maybe viewed that as the silver bullet or the end of any concerns. It's not. It helped us get through 2024 in a really positive fashion. We're excited about that. That number is indexed. We're excited about that. It'll continue to grow, but it doesn't mean that the city of West Bend is flush and has the ability to spend money on a bunch of new positions or to unfortunately fix a bunch of roads with the money. It was spent with increased costs within our respective departments that have all seen increases throughout the year and years, and we just haven't been able to fund those increases. Those increases continue to come up, come to us with inflation. It costs us a lot more money to mow the grass and public works and parks when we contract that service to Scotts, for example, than it did a few years ago. So we do a lot of in-house work. We also can contract and can hire consultants within a lot of other program areas within our departments, and those costs have continued to go up. We're using this new increased money to fund those increases. The minor adjustments I mentioned, we'll talk through that document in a second, but only made minor adjustments to increase the overall general fund. That increase is really the contingency, and again, I'll talk through that. You can skip ahead two bullets and see the contingency line item of $100,000. It's a pretty modest number on the size of budget that we administer here. I'm really pleased to announce that on an annual basis, we make it with this small number. 2023's budget had a $90,000 contingency number in it, and we're okay with that. We're recommending 100 at this time. This number might move a little bit depending on how those other final numbers come in from the state, but one that Kerry and I feel okay with as far as a modest contingency line, as long as the department head team works as hard as they do in creating their budget and doing so in a really diligent and thoughtful fashion. This next bullet is a big one. The overall levy is going up. So that's certainly a message that should be made clear. We're recommending about a $700,000 increase in the overall levy. The general levy in total is going up $700,000, 2023 to 2024. The rate, however, is going to go down significantly. This is the byproduct of the revaluation that our city has just gone through with significantly increased values of property. Even with a increase in levy, the rate has plummeted. I list $6. It might move a couple of cents at this meeting annually. I remind the council that that number can move a little bit based on how the final numbers come in from the other taxing agencies and those last couple of numbers from the state. But that, the fact is, it's going down. It's going down significantly. Our current tax rate for 2023 is $8.34, and at this point, with the document that you have before you, we're recommending a $6 tax rate, so significantly decreased from 2023. The last few bullets are with numbers. I'll just share the debt service levy is increasing by 497, 495,000. It's really a reflection of two TID, two tax increment finance districts, TID 11 and TID 14. TID 14 is the, TID 11's been on the levy the last couple of years, and it continues to be on the levy to the tune of 280,000. TID 14, unfortunately, the new manufacturing center TID that we had anticipated a second manufacturer in, a second project in at this time, and has not made it, is causing a 300-plus thousand dollar levy hit. And we obviously hope that's short-lived. We're working hard to find number two. Kettle Moraine Metal Products, as you all know, has been announced to go into the TID. They're working through some final financing before they start their project. They were all fired up to start, and then the banking market has been such where that's become more complicated for them to find the money and gain approval to move forward. But one that we're still working with them on and hopeful that we'll be able to grow our way out of that future financing. But that's really the driving force behind the debt service levy, increasing by 495 for 2024. The library levy is, reflects a 4.53%, so four and a half percent increase in their levy request. They are returning a halftime library associate position. They have a handful of library associate positions, and they reduced one going into 2023 with the hope that they could make it with that. They are asking for that position to be back. They asked for a bit more than that, and we settled on the return of one halftime position for 2023, 2024, excuse me. I mentioned the state transportation aids are coming in soon. And then the tax levy is probably worth noting in the taxi area. We have a contract that's based on CPIU with Go Right Way. They provide a great level of service for our community. The shared ride taxi is a well-loved and strongly utilized service within our community. We get by with, I'll say, only $130,000 on the levy. That's a pretty modest number for the service that we provide and for the amount of individuals that are touched by that. It had been zero through the COVID years. There was enough money coming in from the federal government that caused us to be able to be off the levy totally for two budget years. Last year, we returned to the levy based on increased CPIU and inflation, and that's the same thing that's hitting us again this year, so we're staying on the levy to the tune of 130,000. And then this budget qualifies one more year for expenditure restraint. Some of you that have been around for a while have been hearing Kerry and myself say that this is the last year we're going to qualify for expenditure restraint, and then something else happens and we qualify again. Well, what happened this year was the shared revenue formula, so they froze everything and just said you can keep expenditure restraint for one more year. Our number has gone down significantly in that area. When I first started with the city, it was around $800,000 seven years ago. Our expenditure restraint number for this budget 2024 is 360,000, so significantly down, but at least we still have it. And by having it in this budget means that we'll receive it again in 2025. It's always a year out. So the fact that we qualified, we qualify for it in this budget means that we'll receive the funds one more time. They'll probably be $360,000 minus X, but at least there'll be something coming to us for one more, I guess I would call it, a bonus year. And, I don't know, maybe it'd be cool to be back here a year from now and say the same thing again, that, hey, we qualified for it one more year because the state did X. Or I don't obviously have that crystal ball, but good news that we're going to receive those funds, $360,000 in 2024, and again, qualify for something in 2025. That's all I had as far as budget highlights. There are lots of other budget highlights. I'm prepared to answer any questions that you might have now. Our department head team can do the same. And if you want to hear from Chief before we do that, Mayor, that's up to you on the new position. Okay? Thanks, Chief.
I promise I'll be brief. I know you've sat through a lot. It's no wonder he just got the 30-year Government Service Award on a national level. I'm very proud of Jay, but I can tell you that you should be very proud of our team, our department heads. I'll speak to our specifics tonight, but know that every one of the department heads, their employees have worked very hard on the budget document that's in front of you, working very hard with Kerry and Jay and Jess to make sure that we're presenting a document that should have very few questions, but there certainly are questions. So I'll give you a brief overview tonight. I'm glad we have a two-week window to answer some more of your hard questions before it takes it to the vote. And I strongly, strongly encourage you, not just myself, but every other department head asks you of this, too. We'd much rather have you come meet with us, sit down, call us, spoke with Mr. Allen today to work through. You'll help clarify our presentation to you on some of those questions, but actually, it's not something that is easily transcribed in a five-minute presentation. So I really encourage you to contact the department heads and their teams. At the police department, our second year of our team working through this document, we've very much embraced the fact that this budget is, we're cops, we're not really money people. It's more of a planning document. And if you, I remember in my classes, them talking about budgets as a planning document, just thinking, you know, right, look at these columns. But it truly is. And so we took this as an opportunity to, once again, go through and be strong stewards of the taxpayers' money. The, I'll speak first to the Axon Police Camera System, and I apologize, Jay's being very nice, probably my error in my messaging on the dollar amount. We had a line item for $76,000. It was an ongoing cost for our Axon body camera, squad camera systems. We had a separate system that documented our custodial interview rooms, our lobby interview, non-custodial, non-interview rooms. State mandated statutory mandated recording of custodial interviews very clearly has to be done. Our system has not been functioning for, I'm pretty sure it's more than two years. I know for sure it's the two years it hasn't been functioning correctly in our custodial interview rooms. The cameras worked, audio hasn't, so our officers are still relying on body camera. This is what we take in front of court when we're in our serious prosecutions and we're having to meld those two together. Our IT has been working very hard at fixing it. It just isn't, we're to the point now, we're throwing bad money over bad money. We've replaced servers. It's a system that we know is at end of life. Long story to get to, we were band-aiding that system along. What we did was spend a tremendous amount of time researching different systems available, and one of the main reasons is I want it simple for our officers. I want a system in place to make their job easier. So we contracted with Axon, the same people that work our body cameras, that work our squad cameras, will now be installing a system into our custodial and non-custodial interview rooms. That's great on a couple of levels. It's a maintenance-free. If a camera breaks, they replace it for free. They've been fantastic in their coverage of our body cameras and our squad cameras. They've been wonderful with that. But more importantly, all services iCloud-based, not iCloud, cloud-based, I'm sorry. Apple's got us all brainwashed. It's cloud-based, so all of our evidence, it goes to evidence.com, which has made a digital transfer to our district attorney's office. We're able to share links. It's just a great system, and more importantly, it's now one system. We asked Axon to renegotiate all of our contracts and get us on a five-year program. So we had starting times for each different application. Axon is now, we're now under that five-year contract for that 107,000 that you see. We're fairly confident that the savings that we're locking into, technology's not going to get cheaper. At the end of the five years, it's going to be more than 107,000. We're fairly confident that that will pay fairly closely to the $30,000 increase by over the five years saving. So it is an increase, but it's replacing a system that was bad money, that wasn't fixed, that needed to be fixed, and it's simplified our system. So I use that as an example to share with you. That was a vision piece, right? It would have been easier just to replace another server and keep doing what we're doing, but it was a chance for us to really go through. And we talked with other vendors and did all those due diligence before we landed to this. So thanks for that opportunity to talk about it. And I know that's occurring at each of our departments and our department heads and their teams as well. Jump ahead to the police support specialist. When Alderman Berquist and I were working on the road in the 90s, our technology really was our pen and our clipboard. We wrote, hand-wrote our reports, maybe the radios, obviously, right? Was about the extent. Law enforcement has changed so dramatically, I have to have the younger officers show me how to turn the lights on in the squad. It's like a spaceship in there. There is not a piece of law enforcement that doesn't rely on technology. So that makes it a great benefit, but it also makes it somewhat of a liability. There was a guy by the name of Lee DeRouer. He was a dispatcher, and he self-taught himself to be our first IT specialist back in the 90s. I think he worked in 90, from 80 to 2009, and that's when Kurt Lulich took over, and Kurt became our guru. Kurt is a fantastic computer genius and IT specialist, and he's the perfect person for you to have as your department head for IT. In 2022, Kurt and AJ, who are our two IT people in the police department, left the police department to go serve the city on a higher level. I still believe that that was a good decision. It's been for the department as a whole, I'm sorry, for the city organizations as a whole, very positive thing. We knew at the time that there was some risk involved in that, that we are, for a couple of reasons. One, we're gaining our use of technology and we're losing the people that we're going to truly monitor. Now, they've done a wonderful job to still work. They're very responsive to us, but the truth of the matter is they're not in-house. They're serving the whole city, and our technology needs to continue on. It's actually a point, it sounds like I'm kissing up a little bit, but Alderman Allen identified it when he did some of his ride-alongs with us, both on the street with our supervisors and certainly when our clerical and dispatch, that we weren't using technology to the most efficient level. And we certainly knew that as well, it was something we've been monitoring. I promised the community three different things, right? Accountability, responsiveness, and excellence in policing. And right now, we're not using technology to an excellent level. In fact, I make the analogy where, you know, you use a computer like to type up your email. I mean, that is like the most minimal use of it. There's so much more power to do. We run a records management system called ProPhoenix. Our Lieutenant Grinwald, Lieutenant Lichtensteiger, Kurt Lulich, and Dispatcher Hall had just attended their national convention or their convention, state convention, I'm sorry, in the Dells. And Lieutenant Grinwald reported back that throughout the presentation, from hundreds of people, they kept calling out West Bend PD because of our interaction with them. We've been one of their main beta testers. They kept talking about Tom Lichtensteiger basically developing the field training officer segment of ProPhoenix. They talked about Kurt's involvement in the problem-solving modules. And that makes me very proud. We don't use any of those modules. We're not, so we're helping them create a program of excellence, and we're not utilizing any piece of those. We're getting by. And that's just because our resources is not where it needs to be. So I'm not looking for an IT person. We have very competent IT people. They're very responsive to us. When we have a plug-and-play issue, a hardware issue, a network issue, I'm not looking to replace that. But specific that it's called a police support specialist. We're looking for someone to champion our use of technology. We're looking for someone to get into that program of records management in our CAD system and find the ways that we can use it more efficiently and find the ways that we can utilize these modules and push us ahead. You know, I'm in my 50s. My VCR flashed noon for a while, right? Like, if anyone remembers a VCR. It's not, I don't have the expertise level, but I know enough that we have people that do, that can push us. So we really need a change agent that's going to help us utilize our technology. Records management's a small piece. Our time system, that's how we communicate with the state and run license plates and warrant checks. Right now, our administrator is the Kurt, head of IT. So we can't sign our dispatchers up unless we have Kurt's involvement, and he has other responsibilities. There's a lot of those pieces that we've recognized that Kurt possesses the, all of the institutional knowledge on our technology use. And Kurt's awesome. He's a friend, a dear friend of mine. In fact, he's so valuable, I just want to let you know that one of our solutions was I really courted Kurt to return to the police department to make you all find another department head and return because he does possess that knowledge and that service is needed. Respectfully decline because we can't come close to the department head salary, and I think he sees that he's on a bigger level. So I have a tremendous list I could run down with you of all the things that's in Kurt's kingdom that we need to make sure that we're having a champion within our own department. So I really So I really ask you, come and see me, make a phone call, and we can talk through that a little bit more because I know there's some type of football game on that we're all looking to get to. I would be remiss to say that. So our crime incident reporting, we report our crime numbers to the state. That's still in Kurt's domain. Our radio, our radio system is still in Kurt's domain. Our tracks, which is how we write all our tickets. I've talked to you a lot about our upgrades in our dispatch system that are... That will be coming, SCNet, that's Kurt's domain. We need... We'll need a project manager for that. We won't... So all those things we're looking to utilize. Part of the concern is what happens five years from now when we've got a handle on all the technology? Now, I'm also smart enough to know that by then, whatever handle we have on will be antiquated, and there'll be more work to do on that. So we're fairly confident of that. But to make sure that we're using this position effectively and efficiently, we're looking at a hybrid model where we'll utilize this position also as, it's called like a crime analyst, but on the tech side. So right now, one of our detectives, our most... One of our most senior detectives, who makes a very good salary and does a great job as a detective, we utilize him to be downloading software. Every case that we work has a cell phone involved or a computer to download. And so that detective, Detective Brian Gearing, subject matter expert at what he does, spends a lot of time sitting at a desk watching phones download. We believe we can really find some efficiencies there, that he'll still manage that process, but then have someone to complete the work for him and help us to be more efficient. So he can be out doing the things detectives need to do. I stress it because there's a need probably down the road, and not too far down the road, that I'll be in front of you asking for additional staffing. We feel this is a way that we can efficiently use a civilian position to eliminate or alleviate some of that immediate need and find that balance. So we do... My team really fall... We do really believe ourselves to be stewards of the taxpayers' money and really don't come in frivolous. Believe very strongly. We've had long discussions with the admin team, with IT, and I understand some of the concerns. I just would pledge to you that this is not... This would be a piece that would work in collaboration with IT, not as a replacement. You all know me well enough, I'd talk for another half hour. I understand you probably missed kickoff already, right?
Thank you, Chief.
So please come and see me. Please come and see me, and let's talk more about it if you have additional questions. The last thing I'd just like to point out on, Jay talked about the reduced municipal court revenue. I wanted to tell you that it isn't because all of the sudden we're not writing tickets. We did see a significant drop with COVID, but we've also been overestimating that account. Maybe, let's say we've been very optimistic in that account for several years, and as we review and did some five-year studies, we felt this is... Much rather be a little bit more accurate in that, and maybe we'll overshoot it. Just wanted to touch on that. Entertain any questions, but again, we really encourage you strongly to contact me directly.
Thank you very much, and we will over the next two weeks. Any questions?
I look forward to it.
Please reach out to Chief. Jay?
So the last document, the proposed versus adopted, again, it's not adopted, but that's our terminology within the budget world. Those line items, if you have any questions about them, I already highlighted the elimination of printing of ballots. The county is also printing the tax bill, so that's a minor savings for us in 2024. And then all of those deducts that you can see are offset by the addition of the contingency. We start out with zero and then add as we can. Again, recommending the $100,000, so a net total add to the budget of $36,000. If you have any questions, I'll attempt to answer them. Maybe one more quick thing, Mayor. Sorry, I shared with you the $700,000 levy increase that's being recommended that reflects a 2.86% increase to the levy, general fund levy for our budget. So a, in my opinion, a modest increase for the amount of work and good services that the constituents of the City of West Bend are receiving.
Any questions for Jay? If not tonight, we've got two more weeks before we need to approve this budget. And so please, call Jay, call any of the department heads. I spent some time with Jay this afternoon and appreciate that, and I'm sure you guys will too. So please reach out.
So Mayor, if I may, a month before you approve the budget, two weeks before we check in again at the next review time. And then maybe lastly, if I may, just a quick thank you to the department head team. The department heads are dedicated. They work hard on this. This is the single most important piece of policy that this body gets to review and react to and approve ultimately in any given year. And just know that you have a team that takes this very seriously. They put their best efforts forward, and I want to thank them publicly. Thank Kerry and her finance team. She wins awards within GFOA for a reason. They do a really good job. And continue to watch the bottom line for our taxpayers in the City of West Bend.
The increase-decrease paper that Jay's referring to is page 179 of our packet. We didn't print that out tonight, but it is in the packet. It's out there for the public to see. It's at the kind of the tail end of the budget document. So that's... Jay referred to that, and so did Chief several times, so that's in there. If there's no other questions on this topic, we'll move on to a resolution levying a special assessment for the 2024 Downtown West Bend Business Improvement District.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderman Model. Any comments, question, discussion on this? Not all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to our reports tonight, our first one being the Library Board meeting on September 19th. Alderman Berquist.
Oh, sorry, guys. It's... But hey, the last meeting of the Library Board was held on Tuesday, September 19th at the library. We were called to order, recited the Pledge of Allegiance, and approved the consent agenda, which included the minutes of the August 15th meeting and the August 2023 expenses. The financial reports were given with little discussion. The library director provided a written report from various staff members, which we then discussed. Key highlighted... Key highlights were a handout from the State Department of Public Instruction titled "Library Funding 101." This publication outlines the sources of library funding in Wisconsin. The primary source of funds is from municipal appropriations. In fact, based on 2019 annual report data, municipalities accounted for 63% of funding for 381 libraries in the state of Wisconsin. Okay? The next biggest supporter is home county payments, which accounted for only 23% of funding. Third is other county payments, which are funds that are billed from residents who cross county lines for service based on accessibility issues. These payments account for only 2% of funding. Last is gifts, donations, fines, fees, which account for 12%. Also provided was a chart of responsibilities detailing roles and responsibilities of the library boards, library directors, municipalities, and friends groups and foundations. We were given a spreadsheet on library statistics. Of note was the total door count year-to-date of 142,784, and the total circulations, that is items that are checked out, at 283,877. August brought in 241 new library cardholders, bringing the total number to almost 23,000 library cardholders. And with continued pride in our library, its staff, and our community, we continue to exceed the statistics of the Mead Library in Sheboygan. You know, that's the big guys up north. So also noted was that we continue to exceed the state average in use of digital resources. So that's a good plus. Steve continued to be involved in community activities, speaking at the Sunrise Rotary Meeting on August 22nd. The library will participate in the Open Doors West Bend Event, which is coming up soon, providing tours at the library. Staff members will also be attending the Wisconsin Library Association Conference to build on their vocational... Vocational knowledge through networking with fellow library colleagues. Plus, check out the library's social media pages to see all the assorted programs going on about town. Some events have been the Phone Party, Storytime, Drum Circle with Elmore Dawson, Flicks and Bricks Lego Program, Storywalks in the Park, and so much more. We had four items on the agenda for consideration, the first being the 2024 library budget. We went over the numbers, Steve's request for next year, and the fact that costs for everything are going up. Budget was approved knowing that amendments will be made when we approve the city's budget. Number two was reimbursement for costs paid by staff for programming. The item was approved, but we asked that this practice be limited, instead budgeting in advance for needs. Number three, we discussed a couple of building review proposals focusing on identifying the ever-changing needs of the community. It was decided that further review on that matter was needed. Last but not least was the topic of fundraising. Again, after a little discussion, board members were asked to review the information and prepare to discuss it further at the next meeting, which just happens to be October 17th. So that's all I have. Sorry.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Parks and Rec Commission meeting, September 28th.
Yes, sir.
Is that...
Good evening. Yes, we did meet, and we had a lively discussion. Ryan Schmidt reviewed the Beach Annual Report for the swim season for 2023. Under New Business, Glacier Blue Hills Invasive Species Control Eagle Scout Presentation, Luke Krieger presented his plan to eliminate invasive species, Autumn Olive, within the Glacier Blue Hills Recreation Area. The... We had a Regner Swim Pond update regarding inflatables. We bought this huge inflatable apparatus from Kewaskum. I've played on these before. They're amazing, and I'm really looking forward to that. I expect they'll increase some visitors to the Regner Swim Pond. We had donations that we discussed earlier, and later on, some reports. That's about it.
Great. Thank you. Bid Board on October 3rd.
Yes. We met on October 3rd, 8:15 here in City Hall. We reviewed the minutes of the September, I want to say 15th or whatever, the September Bid Board meeting. We also approved the financial report. We're in good shape financially, as you can see by the fact that we reduced our levy substantially. We then had a presentation and were... From Noelle Brown, the new executive director of Downtown West Bend Association, she presented her plans for the Back on Main event, November 3rd and 4th. This follows the kickoff of the tree lighting ceremony, and so start putting those dates on your calendar. Remember, November 2nd, tree lighting, November 3rd and 4th, Back on Main. Then I provided a marketing committee update that talked about how we're going to publicize the reopening of Main to the community. And then we received an update on the progress of the construction, and it is on schedule. And on my way here, I drove by it, and they are paving big time. They're still working at 10 minutes after 6:00, so it's looking good.
Good. Good. Thank you. Plan Commission on October 3rd.
Yes, we did meet, and we also had a lively discussion then. We raced through a meeting, took about seven minutes, but we discussed development proposals, extralegal certified survey map for located at the southwest corner of Schuster Drive and Royer Lane in the town of Barton. And we discussed a site plan for a new granular activity carbon water treatment facility located at 1153 North Main, both of which approved. And that was it.
Very good. Thank you. Alderman Allen mentioned some dates coming up at the end of October, beginning of November. I'm going to give you a couple of things that are happening just this week. The Hub has a grand reopening of their remodel on Thursday at 5:00, and I'm sure that they would love to have all of us there. And so I hope to see you all there. If you'd like to come to the Hub at 5:00 on Thursday. Farmers Market Saturday morning, West Bend Power Hockey Team's got a hockey game Friday night. And then Jay, I'm going to put you on the spot. Jay's on the Board of the Chamber. New event this weekend called Doors Open West Bend. Can you just give a quick 20-second what it is?
Sure. Happy to do so. Yeah, we're excited about this event. It's an attempt to have a behind-the-scenes or sneak peek into some of the buildings here in West Bend, some of the unique ones and some of the standard ones, if you will. There's a... There are a lot of community partners. Our team is partnering with this event, and we'll be hosting a working wheels part of the event at Lynch. And Chief and Chief are going to have some police and fire vehicles located at Lynch. And in addition to that, Doug Newman's going to have a bunch of public works vehicles out there. So the kiddos are going to be able to see the working wheels, and what makes the city go is kind of their method or their madness of adding that component. But again, a new event, one that we're really excited about. There's going to be a ribbon cutting for it Friday at 1:00, and then kicking right into the 2:00 Friday afternoon, special free event at the Bend that night. So come on out and enjoy some, maybe some buildings that you haven't been in or haven't been in in a while. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. My last announcement is our new fire chief is here. He's starting Week Two, and he's actually here with us tonight. And so if the Aldermen haven't met him yet, Chief Les Noran is here. We were going to do a pinning tonight with him and his family, but his uniform is not quite in yet, and we can't do a pinning unless he's got his fire chief uniform on. And so if you haven't met Chief, he's here. Make sure you go meet him tonight, and he's off and running, and we'll do his pinning at our next Common Council meeting. So any other announcements? Alderman Allen?
In keeping with the current... The Chief of Justice's recommendation to improve fire safety in the home, I would convince you, I would try to convince you to go on Main, find a restaurant, and eat there. That way, I can guarantee you will not create a fire in your home.
There you go.
Also, it's great. It looks great. Go down, take a walk through Main Street. If you are stumbling in Main Street now, you've probably been over-served because the sidewalks are great, the road looks great. It's really coming along if what I've heard is correct. We're going to start seeing lines on the sidewalk this week. Next Monday, I don't know if... I may have missed this because I was looking for something else. Next Monday, don't forget the Riverwalk Grand Opening at the boat launch, kayak launch at 5:00, followed by a free event at the Bend, 5:30. So I would recommend attendance there. Also, I'm going to announce this, we'll announce it again at the next council meeting, but there are two sessions planned at the library on their Free Coffee Fridays. One is October 27th for the odd district Aldermen. These are the Aldermen that will be elected in the upcoming cycle, Districts 1, 3, 5, and 7. This is a chance for them to meet with constituents, and it's a good environment because they get free coffee and they get fed cookies, so they're in a pretty good mood. They're not looking to take a bite out of the Aldermen. There's a second session for the even district Aldermen. These will be the 2, 4, 6, and 8, and that will be on November 17th, also a Friday. So I don't think I've missed any of my announcements.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else? If not, we have no more business before the Common Council, and I will adjourn. Thank you all for being here, and go Packers. Thank you.